Martin, I'm glad you stood up.
I like you, man.
I like it.
You ought to come on our team.
I'm gonna ask one more time, would you be considerate of the talking, your asking? You brought your concerns here and responding to them.
I'm trying to respond to the good majority of the concerns addressed tonight. Uh, good evening, public. Uh, there was some concern about where the money is going. Uh, we're in a federal emergency and that the monitoring does come from the state, but we have disclosed full transparency. So, any resident is welcome to, uh, see the finance director. It is a her pleasure to get any document pertaining to the city's finances. Uh, potholes will be an ongoing concern. Uh, we ask that that be the highest priority. Uh, when allocating, uh, money, we tried to see which way we can go with CDBG money and see if we could, uh, reallocate some of that and go, uh, towards to fix the, uh, some of the streets. Uh, they did have some allocation, but it wasn't enough to, uh, to make good. What we need to do is get with Cleveland and see every time that, that a water main breaks, they do dig up the street, they forget that they have to come back and put asphalt over the, over the cutout in the road. Uh, that can lead to some type of pothole. That can lead to further, uh, street decline, road decline. Um, we talked about terrorist rolling. That is a, that is a horrible situation. And one would ask yourself, who handles the day-to-day operations of the city?
Who manages it?
Is, is one thing, is one thing to sit, you know, as a city council person and demand this happen and that happen, but I was discussing with a resident on yesterday that when an individual does not report to you directly, when they do not report to you directly, it makes it very complicated to get things done because their, their loyalty and or their, their allegiance is to the individual that hired them. Not to say that, that, that is the greatest of breakdowns, but when an individual does not report to your office, I rarely can tell that individual, hey, go and board that building up. Hey, why, why doesn't the police, uh, stop the looters and, 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 uh, people stripping the building, uh, from going inside of that building? Each council person up here has raised a question about, uh, uh, 13800 terrorists. Even to the extent of saying wherever the individual is, put a warrant out for his arrest. However, however, again, again, that is a structure that is owned, is owned by an individual that has gone missing. Every effort, every effort placed upon this council has been referred to the mayor's office, has been referred to the appropriate department heads. Again, it is a complicated situation. Do I want the building boarded up? Yes. Is it a hassle? Yes. Just because something sits the way it's sitting does not mean somebody does not care to see it fixed. We sat here for twenty years and watched gang people run up and down the street. We've watched people get killed, or, you know, friends of mine are dead. We watched, uh, drugs be, you know, come through, uh, back and forth throughout the community. Some of my friends helped tear down the community and I'm proud that they're helping, trying to build things up. But I've been in this community just as long as some of you. I didn't hear all of the noise that I needed to hear when I was a kid running around here watching all this stuff decline. But I chose to come back to this community and make it better. No, it does not pay. I couldn't care less about the pay. But what I do care about is the fact that when I did host cleanups, posted them on Facebook, told people to come help, I didn't see that much participation. There are community organizations out here doing work, and I don't see that much participation. But it's easy to come sit in a room and direct the concern towards individuals when, 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 and this is in general, us ourselves are on display too as residents. Because I have, I have declared time and time again, the, the chain of command for a city. It starts with the resident, it goes to the city council, then it goes to the executive branch. And that has been very, very clear, but where is the residential involvement? It's easy to get out here and circulate a petition about somebody's, uh, demise or, or, or success. But I'm talking about where, where are you when it's time to, time to really, really put in work? I did leave something on Mr. Heinz's page. Unfortunately, one of my kids was struck down on Wade Park, and I just was not in the capacity to get over there that day and help. He's having one on Monday, I will be there on Monday. But I, you know, I, I don't have to, have to say that my loyalty is to the community, with or without a title. I'm intriculated through this East Cleveland Public School system from kindergarten to twelfth grade, went and got college education, came back and still wanted to work. If you fought a person for doing a job that does not pay, a job that, that is thankless, then so be it. But that's not, I still stay here and I'm still gonna do what is necessary for my community, whether or not I'm liked or not. It's not gonna stop me from, from talking to a young man at night, right Ernest? It's not gonna stop me from picking up trash. It's not gonna stop me from helping an old lady. It's not gonna stop me from going to gas station to gas station, asking people not to stand out in front. It's not gonna stop me from riding down your street 'cause you see me. It's not gonna stop me from addressing the, uh, Ms. Galloway. She called about the issue. She said a bus dropped off prostitutes, so I came over there and said something to all three of them standing on the corner of Burnett. That's not a toot of the horn. I do whatever's necessary, even when nobody's looking and even when it's not a pat on the back. So until I can judge each and every one of individuals who has something to say about the criticism of government, or, or whatever government's, government is doing, I need to see your resume first upon what, what has happened in this community. Because, because East Cleveland didn't just tear itself up when, when Mansell Baker got on here for any of these other council people. East Cleveland declined on the basis of honesty and transparency. It has gone down over the years based on people's individual efforts and what they do to this community.
Thank you. Thank you, Mansell Baker. I appreciate your comments. Uh, Mr. King, I did.
I'd like to thank everyone for coming out tonight. My apologies, my colleagues. I like to associate myself with much of what Congressman Baker, Congressman Marley said. I too am a reason the city, this is a thankless, this is a boss, rather thankless job. This is a thankless job at times that it doesn't pay, so we're doing it for the love of the city. We know we can do better. What I'd like to ask all the residents, the residents here in this room, come back to another meeting. Come back, say council, we had a bake sale. Here's a thousand dollars from the bake sale. Let's buy some coal packs. Here's some streets we want packed, right? Not to toot any horn, but Wheeler and I paid for some packs last year to pack some streets. Coming in here complaining is not getting the potholes filled. Help us out. Everyone here knows that we don't have the money, right? Buy property, rehab, put somebody in. It's too easy to complain. Let's roll up our sleeves and get something done.
Thank you. I appreciate your comments, uh, Councilman King. Uh, Councilman Vice President Wheeler.
Good evening, everybody. You know, I'm not one of the wasters that's loud and screaming out. The workers on the streets and in the offices, uh, just like this gentleman says, he's from Shaw, from East Cleveland. It's kinda unique right now in council because you got three people here that grew up in East Cleveland like yourself, like some of you other brothers. We were raised up here and we care for the city. We, we really, really love the city and always want to see it prosper. But since I've been here, the dump that everybody been talking about, I understand the concerns about that. And that's why you guys thought of writing up our, uh, paperwork down to create legislation for some guidelines in place, so we don't get stuck with the trash if somebody pulls out and we have to pay the bill. So I've been working on that. The law firm that we required, that we have retained, Bobby and King, that also they can give us an option outside of the merger. Don't get me wrong, I don't support the merger, but I do support whatever we have to do to protect and save and give us the public services that we all deserve, whether it's from Cleveland Heights, Cleveland, or whoever it may be from. I like to save the city if we can, but if we can't, so be it, but it's gonna have to make, it's gonna make business sense. Dollars and cents is what it's bound to be. We can change it, fix the potholes, get more police for prostitution, the drugs off the street. That's gonna take money. Also grant writers. We need to find out about some against the grant writers. They grew up in the city, they understand the city, they can put something together and give some dollars. And then last but not least, I've been reaching out to a solar firm to see about doing some solar activity in our neighborhoods, like down off of Hay, where we can try something new, generate some revenue off of that, sell that energy back to the grid. I mean, that's what we have to start thinking out of the box and say, this is what we can do. So those are some of the things that I'm working on. And I know that everybody's not happy with, you know, you can't make everybody happy, but you do what you think is right. I think they're keeping us three on council, or keep us active and involved, we'll get something done. Thank you, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President, I appreciate your comments. Well, I guess it's my turn. Um, Ms. Womack, I appreciate the fact that all of you fellows and young women have been here a long time. I've been here a long time, and I've been here almost fifty years. I raised five kids here and basically was done with the show. Um, Ms. Gowdy, you came to the last, um, council meeting and you talked about the sinkhole that was on the corner of Roslyn and Euclid. Well, my service department had been talking about that sinkhole forever, and he said they were treating us like secondhand citizens. Now, you live on that street and you are a precinct committee person, but that was the first time that I heard from you about that sinkhole. I didn't even hear from my, uh, council, King, about that sinkhole.
I got it on video.
Well, I got on.
I got it on video last week. I spoke one other day before two years. No, she don't call me out like that. Uh, and so what happened, I went over to the service department and we sat down and we made calls. I called and called, and finally I got the administration. And it wasn't, they weren't very friendly, but when I told them what had happened, and the young man is talking about the water, it was between the sewer and the water. What they do is they dig these holes or try to fix these holes, and then they stick an orange cone in there and walk off and leave them. Now, then we got cones all over the area. Not only that, we got, I was down there working on Penrose. Penrose is full of drug dealers. For the first time, and I, I'm really knowledgeable, but I didn't know what a pair of tennis shoes meant that's hanging across a wife, okay? So, I got that together. There's dogs running all over there. There's prostitution. Before, when I first came in office, Ms. Me and Ms. Gogas went down on, uh, Brightwood, and we took care of Brightwood. It's gonna take a while, and I appreciate my council people saying that they need help. They're not saying they wanna do it all themselves because they can't, but they need help. And when I had my ward meeting, uh, this past Monday, I asked my people, which is War Two, help me help you. Now, I'm president of the council, and that means all the area. So help us, help you. And as far as that dump down there, it's unfortunate that they did have the ability to get down there through taking us in a different way. It wasn't, we were under the oppression, it was a recycling area, but it wasn't the recyc, uh, recycling that that was supposed to deal, we done with. And to find it out that Mr. Riley's wife is the owner, which is our call. I called, I had the first meeting down there, and Mr. Strutton will tell you. I called the mayor, I called my council people, when all of this came to fruition, I was down there, sitting in somebody's backyard, breathing all this contamination. This is not an easy job. This is a job that takes time and it takes perseverance and it takes patience. I don't have that kind of patience, but as my younger individuals do, they have a, a long-term patience. I'm still working on it. When I get pissed off, I go out. I'm from Laker, we don't stand no back doing at all. Well, ask us what we got to do, tell us what we got to do and I'm doing. And again, I heard someone saying you don't have the information. We do have the information about the tax. This is nothing new. It's something that does be done almost every year. You have a, uh, re, uh, revised code that says what has to happen. If, we also talk about the, um, the county and the healthcare. You're talking about the rats and the roaches and everything else. Well, you ain't got no money to be, uh, dealing with that. We can't even, uh, get rid of critters out here no more unless you're paying the owner. So my thing is that bear with us. We don't do the day-to-day operations. None of these, uh, ordinances would get done if you didn't have these five people sitting up here making it happen. And it's not easy. I heard somebody say, uh, not too long ago, it's a no-brainer. It is a brainer, because if you don't know the law that is in your book already, and then the laws that continue to come through again and again and again, you are in serious trouble. And I wanna thank you all for sitting here and indulging me to talk, because I don't try to, you know, try to deal with nobody that come here just to point a finger and say, I got you, you didn't do this or you didn't do that. We trying to do everything we can, and I just wanna say one more thing, and you know, they always talk about. But I was looking at Channel Five, at Ms. Fanny Hall, which is one of my elderly constituents, gets on me all the time because I don't look at the news. Well, there's so much stuff going on on the news, you really don't want to. But this caught my eye, on Channel Five, last night, or earlier. I looked at Cleveland. Forty percent, and I couldn't believe, I had to sit up in my chair, forty percent of their fire equipment is out of order. Sixty percent of the police equipment on the car are out of order. And you know who they put up there to tell you all of this? Yes, the black man, okay? He comes up there and he says, well, we got, we're ordering more, more fire trucks, okay? East Cleveland, guys, done bought a brand-new fire truck, okay? Besides the, the two that was donated to us. So we're in good shape as far as fire. We ain't had nobody burn up yet. Now, the water was out on the, on the hydrant, that might stop you sometime, but we got that taken care of. But I was amazed to hear that someone wants to push us into a merger with somebody that you're talking about our policemen. You got sixty percent of their police trucks down. You got forty percent of their fire trucks that's out of order, and that's the one that we were talking about, which has the ladder. And he said, well, you know what? We're ordering two trucks, but it takes eight to nine months, okay? Eight to nine months to get trucks, and this is, this is Cleveland. They got all that money from the casino, and where they gonna put it? They putting it out here, they putting it on the shoreline, okay? And this is the area that you want to go and, and deal with. They had a hundred and seven homicides just in one year. Well, a hundred and eight. I don't know, somebody got killed this morning. So I'm just saying, that doesn't make it any better, because this was, this happened over in somebody else's city. And when my, when my youngster, or my councilman down there, Mr. King was talking about, or was it Mansell, talking about, uh, grants. Look at Youngstown. Youngstown living off of grants. Tremont is building up. Ohio City on the west side is building up, bringing a market into it. And I heard Ms. Gowdy said she needs to save a lot. I don't want to save a lot, I want the top of the line. I'd shop and save a lot, but I want the top of the line for East Cleveland, okay? So if we're not broke, if you got a dollar, you ain't broke, okay? So, we have not got to the point that we have not met our payroll. So we ain't broke, we just ain't got enough, okay? Thank you. And, uh, yes, Mr. King?
Can I clarify two points?
Go ahead. We always like to clarify.
The first, the first point, the mayor's petition is an annexation.
Is this personal privilege?
The mayor's petition is an annexation, it is not a merger. A merger happens when two communities, cities, sit down at a table and say, maybe we should combine our resources, maybe we should come together. An annexation is what the mayor files. An annexation is when one city goes to another and throws his hands up like, hey, I don't know what I'm doing, I can't manage this, help us out. And the difference is, in the annexation, the city that's throwing itself at the mercy of the other city, the residents vote, whereas Cleveland, because it's an annexation, won't vote, but in a merger, both residents vote. See, in an annexation, just the council has, of Cleveland has the option to allow residents to vote or not, because it's an annexation, it's not a merger. The second, the second.
Thank you.
The second point.
Uh, thank you.
You said, you said I can clarify two things.
No, I, yeah, I said that. We don't need to discuss the annexation.
I'm done with that, but I, I wanted to hear about something else.
We're going on, Mr. King, we're going on.
It's not about the bargaining.
I'm confused.
Mr. King, we're going on to the special council meeting. Uh, can I have a motion to adjourn?
I move that this meeting be adjourned.
Do I have a second?
Sorry.
All right, call it.
Council King.
Moving on.
Come on, yeah.
Council Martin.
He said yeah.
I said yeah.
Council Baker. Council Wheeler.
Yeah.
Council Thomas.
Yeah. Okay, we're moving on to the, um, special council meeting. Uh, today is Thursday, October twenty ninth. We were supposed to have started at six thirty, but due, I mean, five thirty, but due to the concerns, uh, we went over a little later. Madam Quirk, would you call, uh, to order the meeting?
Council King.
Present.
Council Martin.
Present.
Council Baker.
Present.
Council Thomas.
Present.
Council Wheeler.
Here.
Okay. We have, um, Madam Quirk, would you read into the record, um, the resolution that we will.
On order, remarks of the public.
I'm sorry, I have to do it all the time. Uh, remarks of the public on agenda items only. Is there anyone that wanna speak on the, uh, agenda items only on the, uh, special, uh, council meeting?
Yes, I, I think I raise a question in reference to, uh, resolution like fifty-one, fifty-one, fifteen?
Yeah, this was.
Fifty, fifty-one. You're on now.
This is fifty-one.
Oh, that's what they have out here?
This is not me.
We're special council.
Special council.
We did a, we did a merger order.
They should, they should be there.
Do you see it, Mr. Earl?
Yes. Okay, uh, in reference to, uh.
Uh, let me say this. One, two, three, go.
Uh, resolution fifty-fifteen, a resolution proving the mayor's financial, uh, recovery. Oh, he does have it in, is that true?
Yes.
I, I'm glad to hear that, and, uh, because you had until the, let it go, uh, thirty of October to get it in, and I'm glad to know it's in, but we don't, I guess not privileged to as to what's in it or whether it's, they're going to approve. I hope that they have made some improvements over the one that has been presented. And I'll say again, I hope it is not to tax the few people that is remaining in the city out of the city. And, and I hope that the council will not go along with just taxing the people. We have to look at, and there's a proverb, and I will quote it, where there is no vision.
People perish.
The people perish, and the city is perishing because there is no vision. And, uh, it is unfortunate. And then when I hear coming from the council, some of the councilmen saying that the city, this city ain't never, I've been here perhaps longer than anyone in this room, has never been like this. Every administration done something. We did rehabbing, there is no rehabbing or nothing else going on in this city. Everything is, you position this city to, to, uh, to be, I mean, to, yeah, perish or whatever. And then you wanna put it on, where these my tax dollars are going for? That's what the city, are we doing? That's, our, our taxes we paying to operate, don't, don't tell me that we, we, we got come up with money to do this, that, or the other. We come up with money, we pay our taxes. And then you said something, you said, someone else, you said in reference to a grant writer, that's what you should have around here or whatever. And then with the money you do get, you don't spend it wisely, you have to pay it back, or you misspent, uh, misappropriated it or whatever the case may be, using it for something it was not used for, you have to pay it back, and then when we do get it, we don't use it. Three hundred thousand dollars, one house, when you could rehab fifteen or twenty houses? Even when you talk about the drug boys, the drug boys recognize that factor in saying that. We're not doing anything. They ain't gonna sit up here talking about what has and not been done, oh, oh, twenty years ago, this city didn't look like this, no, twenty years ago, didn't look like this way ten years ago. Shit, you're tearing down the city. You're destroying your revenue. You're not building up nothing, building right here Euclid and Superior, a wraparound building, historical building. Tearing it down. Everything you tearing down, tearing down the track.
Someone else? Agenda items only?
Yes, uh, Juanita Gowdy, um, revolution. Um, well, we get, um, to see what the mayor actually put on that agenda for the, um, plan, for the plan, financial plan.
Can I always come up to the office and ask for the, um.
A copy?
The, uh, recovered one.
Because, um, I was here about two weeks ago and I asked for, um, like the twenty years for the women's and, uh, the mothers that, that needed home health aid and the training that's been set in the office for over twenty years, that was dipping into the money, but they wasn't doing the funds. So, when I came up here and I asked, um, Mr. Lynch for, uh, So when I came up here and I asked Mr. Lynch for the paper, Lynch for the paperwork, they acted like monsters. They acted like they didn't want to give it to me. I went through the procedures and finally got what I need, but he's still missing, I'm missing a lot of items out of it. So the grant that been sitting here for twenty years for the mothers that can take, see, they, training for STNA and home healthcare. I wanted that program because one step away is a program and I'm already in the nursing field. And I wanted to help the mothers and them to get started with the program because I do got a building and everything, but they acted so cruel, I'm telling you. And it was like, how can you get through? I thank God for the law office. She, Ms. Wheeler, she helped me, but pieces is still missing out of that file. So I need to go back downstairs and get it right and see how much money is in there so we can get started. Second thing, Ms. Barbara Thomas, I do apologize, but you put me on the spot. But I was here that Tuesday and I was here to let you know about the potholes on Roslyn. It was so big. We did not have no city work done. It was because of the street structure it came in. And that's how it ended up being so huge, like an earthquake done hit it. And like Superior, four-one-one-two news, we had to actually get on the news for something to actually get done for Superior. So I don't know where you got your information from, but this is where I'm telling you, I was on four-one-one-two news when the same day the bed bug was right here and I didn't talk about that. So you need to look on that and you can see that I, I said it, okay?
Thank you. I did.
This time that she will bring her bed bug. I'm from the city of Cleveland. I lived for several times. I own Simon's Pest Control.
Simon's Pest Control.
And I come here to volunteer somewhere, clean up your bed bug problem and your rats you wrote. So I could talk to someone and I'm gonna caution her.
I'll make sure that you get in touch with the right person. You need the mom and there's the designated law director right over there. I mean, the prosecutor that's speaking for the law, okay?
Simon's is the best.
Is anyone else speaking on agenda items only?
Yeah, just on this, on this plan we're going. The mayor came back and said that he's under, the city's under sovereign immunity. And I looked it up and it says that we have to have some money put to the side for insurance. It says because it should be in this plan, I'm sure that the finance director is gonna tell me where the family, Christopher, Christopher Kimble, his family, he got killed by one of our police cars in an accident on the passenger side window. He wasn't a thug. He wasn't, he wasn't a drug dealer. He's coming from the rapist over across the street to get something from the convenience store. But they didn't get any, they're not getting the money because there's no insurance. They just knocked it on their door. Should be in this plan somewhere, what we're gonna do to compensate them for our negligence. Because I've heard sovereign immunity, but I think I put it up, put the whole story up. We're not sovereign immunity. He knows we're not sovereign immunity. He knows we don't have money put aside that we're supposed to. I know that he said that he was gonna do it. He wanted to do it, but it wasn't done. He can only do so much, and I'm talking about the finance director, part-time finance director. He's a good guy. He's only doing his job. But if you don't put the money aside, you don't have insurance. And we've got a situation where somebody was killed. Man was killed by one of our police cars. It messed the police cruiser up too. We gotta pay for that auto potter. But on your plan, I'm just wondering, and my question is about this recovery plan you all are looking at now, is where it says that we're insured. Where the city of East Cleveland is insured, where we have insurance for our vehicles and not driving out there dirty because the state says we're driving dirty. So I don't think the car should be leaving the city of East Cleveland because they might get pulled up.
Thank you very much. Moving right along, is there no one else speaking? Is there no one else speaking?
I just, I just have one question. I just have one question. Like when y'all say.
I don't say y'all come up here and address this properly.
Just like who, who actually is the upper? Like y'all, I ain't say y'all point the finger, which y'all like that you are. Who is above y'all, like who?
Well, sir, there's only three, there's three branches of, wait a minute. There is the administration, there is the court, and then there's the council.
Right.
Each one is its own autonomy.
Right.
So each one has to go hand in hand with each other. So if the mayor makes a recommendation, he send it to us through his, through the law department in the form of a legislation.
Right.
And we look at that and if it's viable and protects you guys, then we pass.
Right.
Okay, you got your answer. Thank you. If you want to hear anymore.
Yeah, I'm glad. Would you just turn it? I wanna ensure.
Okay, thank you.
I speak right quick.
On what? On this, on these items only? Sir?
Yeah.
On these items only?
Yeah, I'm with Black on Black Crime. I'm with Article Four.
It doesn't matter. I'm saying.
I'm running for East Cleveland mayor. It's Gary North.
It doesn't matter. I'm saying.
Well, I will speak on that then.
All right. Madam Clerk, would you read the legislation into the record?
Resolution number fifty dash fifteen. A resolution approving the mayor's financial disco recovery plan in accordance with section one-one-eight point zero-six of the Ohio Revised Code for Submission to the Financial Planning and Supervision Commission, Commission and Declaring an Emergency for the Public Safety and Welfare, requested by Mayor Gary A. Norton Jr. and sponsored by Council President Barbara Thomas.
I'm passing out to the vice president.
You agree with resolution number fifty-five, fifty dash fifteen? What's your opinion?
Mr. Vice President, I will sponsor resolution fifty fifteen and move for its adoption with explanation and discussion.
Move, move second, discussion?
Yes, I have, and I want to thank the finance director for coming tonight. He had another engagement and he didn't know what he was making and I'm happy to see him here. Because there is the financial plan, which I went over with the financial, finance director yesterday. And there were some things that were not pertinent to what was forecast of this financial.